That we want to take action on. But before we do that, take action in that closed session, we're going to do a real call. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Are we going to?
And then we'll go into the housing authority afterwards. Is that okay? Okay, let's do that.
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Bowie, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Commissioner Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Wynn.
Yes. Councilmember Fab Bowie just went home sick. He was here earlier for closed session. And Mayor Pro Tem Steve Jones had a family emergency, so please pardon their absence tonight. I think we should go into the closed session since we just came out of that. So I guess we'll do the ceremonial stuff in a little bit. Is that okay? So we have one item that we did not take action on in closed session. So let's have the report from our city attorney.
Yeah, let me, let me first report on the first two items that we had in closed session. And there is no reportable action on those. On the third item, which is the litigation named Montoya versus City Garden Grove. The city council considered proposed settlement of the litigation and decided to take action on that item in open session. If, if the mayor and the council wish, I can highlight the major terms of that proposed settlement.
Please.
The proposed settlement of the Montoya litigation, this is the second round after the intervention by the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. The proposed settlement that has already been executed by the association and by Mr. Montoya is that the city council election system will go to six city council districts, preserving the at-large elected mayor. Four districts will be elected in 2016, went for a term of two years. So that two new districts plus the two four-year district will come up for election in 2018. One of the four districts elected in 2016 must be one with the highest proportion of Latinos by citizen voting age population. The city will pay the association's attorney's fees. And also, as per the original settlement with Mr. Montoya, the city will also pay for Mr. Montoya's attorney's fees and costs. Those are the major terms of the new proposed settlement. And the city council is now going to consider whether to approve that settlement or not.
Okay, I'm going to move to settle as stated.
Second.
Any discussion on this, council? Before we vote? Well, I'd just like to say, this is helping our city, first and foremost, you know, avoid the cost of litigation to our city if we continue this. And, you know, more importantly, our city is going to vote by districts. And this is something that I'd like to thank council member Chris Beard for championing even before we had to. And this is something that we've heard a lot from the community. And now we're going to expand our city council. And that's a good thing. That means that more residents will have an opportunity to have their voice represented by their council member elected within their neighborhood. And that's a great thing for our city. So I'm certainly going to vote yes on this. And if there's no more discussion, I'm going to call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones? Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
Motion received, three yes votes, passing.
Great. Congratulations, people. Okay, we're going to go into our housing authority. Madam Clerk, real call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Commissioner Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Wynn?
Yes. Do we have any oral communications for the housing authority?
I don't have any cards for housing.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple items here on consent.
We first have the reorganization.
Oh, great, okay. So I'm going to now entertain any nominations for chair.
I have a question for you, Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, would you be willing and able to continue on as the chair?
Certainly.
Okay, I'll move approval or move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
Chair Wynn?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes, passing.
Okay, and is there a nomination for vice chair?
I'm willing to continue on as vice chair.
Wonderful. In that case, I move Commissioner Beard to be our vice chair.
Second.
Second.
Please vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
Chair Wynn?
Yes.
Motion passed with five yes votes.
Great. Consent items? Move to approve?
Second.
Please vote. Is there any discussion on these items? Okay, please vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
Chair Wynn?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes, passing.
Doesn't look like we have any items for consideration, any matters from my colleagues on this commission? Hearing seeing none, I'm going to adjourn. Thank you. We're going to take a moment, pause here. Thank you, Commissioner O'Connor. Commissioner Beckles, thank you. And you're going to chair this one. Do you want the gavel? Yeah. So we're going to hear. We're going to do it right now. Yeah. We're going to do it right now when I open. I'm just giving you a heads up. Okay. Call is meaning to order. I'd like to ask Kingsley Okuriki to offer us the invocation. And I'd like to ask him to please stand, please rise.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you bless all who are assembled here this evening and the work that we seek to do. You have enabled us to serve you and our community each in our own various ways. Help us to respect and see each other's service as complimentary. Help us to work in harmony tonight as we seek to make the best decisions for our great community of Garden Grove. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Beard, to please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Please face the flag, raise your hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, may I extend the oral communication?
Okay, I guess we don't have to do a real call there. Let's move right in. Do we need to do that? No, let's pass that. I think everyone knows we're here, right? Okay, great. Sean Donahue?
Hello, my name is Sean Donahue. And again, I work with an organization, the California Growers Association. And we're working with a responsible medical cannabis industry. And quite a lot has been going on in the last two weeks. There's been substantial legislative hearings, joint legislative hearing with the Assembly Health, Business and Profession and Agriculture Committee, all met together. And, and really what you're seeing is a very in-depth implementation of the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, as well as a couple of other cleanup bills, Assembly Bill 1575, which will add delivery-only licenses as well as research licenses to allow for the crucial cannabinoid therapy research to be done. Also of note, Assembly Bill 21, which had this infamous March 1 deadline for exclusive licensing authority, passed through the Senate yesterday, 35 to 3, a strong bipartisan approval. It will be heard in Assembly Committee tomorrow, and then will be on the Assembly floor on Thursday. And we anticipate the governor should sign it by midway through next week. So in the coming months or weeks, in Garden Grove and other communities throughout California, obviously, as, as responsible industry actors, we stand ready and willing to assist communities seek out what sort of preferences are ideal to provide a better, more regulated medical cannabis supply chain within their communities. So that's about it tonight. And I understand that there's an item later tonight, but I apologize, I won't be able to stick around.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks for that update. Lee Ostendorf?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Lee Ostendorf. I'm the director of the Farmers Market, Garden Grove Farmers Market. I'm Main Street. Wanted to let you know I'm in the audience when the item comes up, if you have any questions. We have some plans that we're working on with Jim at Kay's Kitchen when they have their reopening, hopefully very soon. And so we're going to have a shot of energy on Main Street at that time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Tony DeSimone?
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for your time. My name is Tony DeSimone. I am part of a professional cannabis industry that looks to regulated methods in Northern California and other states to advance our professional capacity in the coming months. Industry advocates and business owners like myself come ready to assist communities as they begin to implement the license types now made by MRSA. A close family friend of mine is six years old and suffers from spinal bifida. She is on CBD treatment and finds it difficult to get safe access to this medicine. By having a safe access, transparent, well-regulated supply chain in the community, we could provide safe access to the residents to medicine, and this would also lead to large economic opportunities for the city. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, I would like to mention an important initiative that I am concerned about and would like to propose for your consideration. I will follow up with an email. I'm Nicholas Dibbs. I'm a proud graduate of Pacifica High School, been a resident here in Garden Grove for many years. And when I was a student with honors at Pacifica and a member of the senior class leadership team on the ASB, we had a program with the city called Students in Government Day. And that was part of the youth commission. Since that, the program, Students in Government Day, went for about 20 years. And it was really a great program. I remember being a city council member for a day and meeting K Bar and Councilmember Erickson and being able to interact and, and job shadow, more or less. But it, many other students participated in this at the, with the fire department, the police, the city directors and managers and so on. And I'd like to urge that the council and the staff consider bringing back Students in Government Day, even if you can't bring on a youth commission, which I do think would also be helpful. Maybe start small with reinstating, reinstatement of youth in Government Day. And so I want to thank Kim Hoy and her staff, John Montez, for providing me with the background information, and I will forward it to you by email in the near future. About a year ago, informally, I had the chance to mention this briefly to our mayor, Baowen, and he, at that time, seemed very supportive of it. I hope you will consider reinstatement of youth in Government Day at some point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. K Bar, K Bar was our, I think, first and last and only female mayor in our city. And she was also on the water board as well. Maureen Blackman?
Thank you so much. A couple things I wanted to thank Scott Stiles for coming out while we walked the neighborhood this week. He took time out of his Saturday to just cruise around our neighborhood, see, meet neighbors, see homes, and just more or less, as I say, see the good, the bad, and the ugly. Thank you for your time. And thank your family for letting you go. I probably wouldn't let you. I'm going to tell you something that you guys already know. Crime is up thanks to Prop 109 and AB 47. Recent gang activity in this area has asked the police to ask the public for help. And I know that Garden Grove Police Department prides itself in doing more for less, but let's get real, that's getting all, it's wearing a little bit thin with officers running from call to call. It leaves very little time for them to serve warrants or round up criminals. At some point, we're going to have to talk about the elephant in the room. We do not have enough officers to keep our city safe. We're running extremely thin, so I'd like to see if we could take some time and tackle this issue. It takes two years to get a police officer from hire to the streets. And anything that can go wrong between the first day of hire and the last will keep them off. I suggest that we make a firm and a transparent commitment to hire some officers. And I'd like to see it done sooner as opposed to later. Thank you. Go Garden Grove.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh. Following Josh McIntosh is John Holm, and then Tony Flores. And then the last person I have here is Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Josh McIntosh. And I am here to give my support to the Farmers Market, which is an item for consideration tonight. We have a modest farmers market, but it is what it is. It's, it's our draw to Main Street on Sunday, and I'd like to ask that their fees be waived once again. And Lee, I love you, thank you for doing it, it's what you do for us. Also, I believe it's a Genom 5F, I'm not, I'm not certain, might not even have been an agenda item. The Promise Zone for Santa Ana. I applaud you for being a part of that in, in hopes that this is a great project and that we get some improvements to the area, probably an area that needs a lot of our attention. And thank you for joining up. Hopefully, we can get some more funding. Santa Ana did it and reached out to us, so hopefully we can request some more funding on our own for other areas, that area specifically. And then my new tradition for 2016 is to endorse a planning commissioner. And I just want to say that we have a gentleman here tonight, his name is Michael Barker. I know him to be a long-term Garden Grove resident, verified. And I would personally like to support him. I know of his professional and, professional career and his education. Be a great candidate to fill the vacancy we have. And that's it. Thank you very much.
John Holm?
Honorable Mayor Baowen, honorable members of the city council, honorable staff. My name is John Holm. I'm a 36-year resident and a business owner here in Garden Grove. I'd like to talk about revenue. We have facing us a huge demand on our revenue streams, which is no surprise to any of you. And I would suggest that you start to look at industry as a way of mitigating that demand. We have the largest tofu manufacturer in California, right here in Garden Grove, House Foods. And the way we begin this endeavor is to go see them and thank them for the business. They generate approximately $100,000 a year in taxes. That doesn't go all here. It goes up to Sacramento and down to Orange County and back here. But they do provide money. I'd like to also mention, I've worked with this company, and when you go in their lobby, you'll see pictures of Little League and Pop Warner. They're good stewards of their community. They want to be part of it. And I would ask, I would suggest to the council that taxes are not a one-way street, that they give us taxes and we in turn give them service. And we need to point that out to them. This is an opportunity for the city council. It's yours for the taking. I've talked to each of you individually, and you seem to be receptive. But now it's time to put the feet on the ground and go out and see them. I would strongly consider that you entertain a new revenue stream in West Garden Grove. We have a half a dozen empty manufacturing facilities there, and yet we have the largest nutraceutical customer base in the United States, right here. Those companies are itching to move and expand their facilities. They do it through what's called outsourcing. And those buildings already located in West Garden Grove are ideal facilities. So I would suggest this one thing. We don't have to raise taxes to raise revenue. Please consider it because you've got a lot of demand being placed for police, fire, the community, private organizations, and the money just doesn't come out of the air. You've got to put your feet on the ground and you have to go out and work for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Flores? Actually, there's another card here.
Good evening, council staff. My name's Tony Flores. Just a couple of quick items. First off, congratulations to Mr. Beard for pushing through districts. What a, for being our champion. We appreciate that. Thanks for getting on there. As far as the pot shops, you know, if pot is really that, that great and it's really good, you know, for painting and whatnot, I'm not sure why it hasn't been going, going through pharmacies. I mean, imagine if I put in for an OxyContin shop, what kind of reception I'd get, if, if any. Just something to keep in mind. Let's talk about the other matter at hand, Mr. Vumai, our planning commissioner. When I was here last time, again, we appreciate his service to our country, but the bottom line is you have to be a resident. It's, it's spelled out in our municipal code, it's spelled out in the government code. We just need to adhere to, to the rules, our laws, our regulations. We're, we're not some thorough poverty shot place. I mean, we're not Vietnam, we're not Mexico. I hope we're not Washington DC. Where corruption runs crazy. And if we decide some other way, if we don't accept a resignation or have them removed, then we're going to look like we're just, we're corrupt. It's plain and simple. We've got problems with our folks in DC. I mean, really IRS, Lois Lerner, Benghazi emails, I mean, nobody's following the laws anymore. And, and we're having crime that's just running crazy. It's permeating down from, from Washington DC, from the White House, all the way down to this level. You heard somebody talk about the crime rates we're having here, and it's happening. We're living it, we're seeing it. And the State of the City addressed, Mayor, I hope you ask about, or at least give us a briefing on the bar lag, broadwater status. We'd like to hear about that. And if you can too, I'd like to know what's going on with the DA's office regarding your investigation from 9:30, 2015, regarding the Hyatt, if you can give us an update on that as well. Getting down to the, the crime stats, it may be antiquated, it may be old, but how it's done is it's, it's a number of officers per thousand. Right now, if we go with the stats we have, I believe the budget says we're 161 authorized. We have approximately 154 officers on the street with maybe 16 that are out injured on duty. That drops us down to 138. If you plug in the, the stats into this formula, where, where the county is 1.0 to 1.2 officers per thousand residents, Garden Grove is .86. That's at 154. If you plug in the 138, we're closer to .77. If you plug in all the tourism on top of our, our existing population, we're at .69. We're, we're dropping pretty quick here. We're defending ourselves out there, basically. And I have advocated that if we don't have enough officers, then I'm going to tell my friends and neighbors and my family, and I already have, we need to arm ourselves. Okay, we need, we need to do something quick here, folks. Short of that, I'm sure we can find other suggestions that we can all tolerate, that we can all live with. But with the crime that's going on there right now, this isn't good. I mean, can our officers, can our department actually address the issues with, with Prop 47? Can they address the, the pot shop related issues? How about organized crime? I mean, what, what, what areas are out there that are going unchecked? And it's going to kick us in the backside. Mr. Fan, you talked about setting a bar around here. The bar's been lowered. Districts aren't, aren't going to hinder that, it's going to help it, I believe. I'm, I'm not wild about having an all Hispanic district, and I can say that, I mean, because it's, not because I'm Hispanic, but when I talked about districts, it had to do with accountability, accessibility and responsibility for our elected officials, not because of an ethnicity. I mean, I guess now I can put a peel box in that district and run on my last name, which is BS. That's not going to happen. Let's get together and let's do something about this crime thing. It's, 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 it's out there, we need to get some suggestions in here, talk to our, our police, our chief, people out there, our victims. What can we do to knock this out? Because this is a, a big deal. And if we've got dollars to put out there with visiting dignitaries from, from other nations, or most recently the Dalai Lama himself, if we've got money to do that, we've got money to, to find ways to get law enforcement back on its feet around here. We need to support them. And I'm not going anywhere, I can tell you that. I might be back out next week, I may not be, or in the next council meeting, but only because you guys caused me to come out here. Believe me, I like to be home watching maybe reruns of Matlock or something. But any case, let's do what we can to make this thing go away. Let's, let's help our, our police department. If that means going to our OC Board of Supervisors, or going to Sacramento, or going to DC, do what you got to do. I'll, I'll write letters as well. You guys know I'm, I'm not afraid of emails. So let's get it going. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. At a recent meeting of our Special Needs and Transportation Committee, we were introduced to the new proposed bus schedule for Orange County. I know there's probably no one in this room who rides the bus to get here. We all drive our cars. But there's a lot of people in Garden Grove who do ride the bus. And the proposed changes are going to affect a lot of those people because a lot of the routes are going to be diminished because of a lack of revenue. So it's important that anyone who does ride the bus get a copy of the proposed route schedule that will be voted on by the Board of Directors and be aware of what changes may affect them, particularly special needs people in South County. Some of those routes are being eliminated, which is going to put them in a terrible position to be able to get to the facilities they need for their own care. So bus riders, be aware of it, pick up a copy of the new schedule that will be voted on by the OCTA Board soon. Also, I was able to attend a meeting regarding the 405 project. Now, this is a project starting in South County, going all the way up the 405, which will impact a lot of the cities along the route, but particularly when it gets to the 22 interchange. And the 22 interchange to the 405, 605. Now, this is an ongoing project that will be continuing for the next 10 or 12 years. So it's going to be going step by step. There will be bridges that will be torn down and rebuilt, and there will be high occupancy lanes installed. So this is something to be aware of. I have a poster with information cards. I'll leave with the city clerk, so in case you'd like to have it posted somewhere at City Hall, so people coming in can look at it and take one of these to reach the information that they need to know what's going to go on with the 405 freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. Vumai? That was the last card for our communications, Madam Clerk. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen. Thank you, Scott. I just want to inform Mr. Tony Flores, please do not associate me with the communist Vietnam I just want to inform Mr. Tony Flores, please do not associate me with the communist Vietnam. My family, just like you, Mayor, just like you, Councilman Fan, we got kicked out of Vietnam because of what we believe and who we fought for. I fought for this country, and I thought I was helping by joining the commissioning board to help the city. So please do not associate me with communist Vietnam. I do not like that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We have, well, I'm going to pass it on to our vice chair of the successor agency for the successor agenda here.
With that, I'll call to order the successor agency meeting of January 26, 2016. I ask the secretary to call a roll, please.
Member Bowie, member Nguyen.
Yes.
Member Phan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Okay, we've covered oral communications and item number two, consent items. We have the adoption of the resolution approving the recognized obligation payment schedule. We also have the approval of warrants. Any questions? Entertainer motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Member Bowie, member Nguyen.
Yes.
Member Phan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
Chair Jones. Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we'll move to adjournment to Tuesday, February 9, in the Community Meeting Center.
Thank you.
That is probably incorrect.
Possibly. Community term.
My bad, sorry.
Right back here at the Courtyard Center. Okay. And I'm going to hand it over to President Chris Fan.
Thank you. Madam Pluck, please call a roll.
Member Bowie, member Jones, member Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice President Beard.
Here.
President Phan.
Yes. We've already done oral communications to organize or reorganize our district.
Would you be willing to continue on as president?
Yes, I would.
In that case, I move to appoint member, President Chris Fan, to continue on as president.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Okay. Member Bowie, member Jones, member Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice President Beard.
Yes.
President Phan.
Yes.
Motion received, three yes votes.
And then for vice president, would Councilman Beard like to continue on?
I would.
Okay, I make a motion for you to continue on as vice president?
I'll second that.
Member Bowie, member Jones, member Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Vice President Beard.
Yes.
President Phan.
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
We have two consent items. May I have a motion, please? Or any questions?
I'll move the consent items.
Call for a vote.
Member Bowie, member Jones, member Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice President Beard.
Yes.
President Phan.
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
We had the public hearings. Any items for consideration? Any matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to our next meeting, which will be on February 23 at 6:30 here at the center. Back to council.
Thank you. Okay, we have no presentations tonight, and let's move on to item 4A and then 4B.
Okay, item 4A is approval for use of Willowick Golf Course for the annual Garden Grove Community Foundation Golf Classic, and Kim Hoy is here to give that.
Great, thank you. Hi.
Hi. Well, Mayor and members of the City Council, annually, both the Chamber of Commerce and the Garden Grove Community Foundation join together for an annual golf tournament, and they come to you every year and ask for, there's one free use of the golf course through the Willowick Agreement that the city maintains, and they would like the council to authorize approval of their use of that one day. And the golf tournament will be May 4th, it's their 12th annual tournament.
Great. And the Garden Grove Community Foundation Chamber Golf Classic, when is that happening?
May 4th. May 4th.
May 4th, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Sorry, I just got to get that out there again. May 4th, is when is happening?
Wednesday, May 4th.
Wednesday, May 4th? Okay, great.
Nine to five.
Proceeds are definitely going to benefit our community and put on some great programs for our community. Any questions for staff? No, is there a motion for that?
Move approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie, councilmember Phan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones, Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
Great, thank you. And item 4B.
Yes, item 4B is regarding the Garden Grove Farmers Market, and Kim Hoy is here to give that report.
Well, for the last several years, Mayor and City Council, Lee Austenford has run the Garden Grove Farmers Market on Main Street, and annually she comes in front of you and asks that you consider waiving the business license fees, which are $68.50 per vendor, and also the event permit fee, which is $50 for the year. The total cost of her request is $1,625.50, and I think you heard from her earlier during oral communications, and staff's just bringing this forward for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Yes, and thank you, Ms. Lee Austendorf, for coming to present to us. Are you still here? Okay, there you are. Hi, great, thank you, and thanks for putting on the farmers market. As, you know, I know a lot of folks really enjoy it, provides a, you know, a space to bring community together and also get really nutritious, delicious vegetables, and meet other folks and whatnot. Colleagues, any input on this?
Good luck.
Good luck, all right.
Yeah, more business, more power to you.
All right.
Can I move approval?
Yes, absolutely. Is there a second?
Move approval of the request.
Second. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie, councilmember Phan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones, Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
We have consent items here?
Yes.
5A through 5H?
Yes. Yes, consent items will be acted on simultaneously with one motion unless separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Or entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie, councilmember Phan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones, Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
And we have a couple of public hearings tonight. Item 6A.
Yes, 6A is consideration of an amended and restated operating covenant agreement with AAA Oil, and Greg Blodgett is here to give that report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight we have for your consideration a resolution approving amended and restated operating agreement with AAA Oils Incorporated doing business as California fuels and lubricants. On May 12, 2015, City Council received information pertaining to the request and directed staff to negotiate an amendment to the original agreement, which we have tonight. So city staff has negotiated the proposed attached amended and restated operating covenant agreement for consideration, and this proposal of the agreement would keep the first $200,000 in base sales tax to the city of Garden Grove over the next 20 years. And then within the agreement, there's a table that shows the sharing of revenues that go both to the developer, or to the CFL company, and to the city, and it's a tiered system. So the first $200,000, 100% goes to the city, then the next $1.8 million, 30% goes to the city, 70% to CFL. The next $1 million tier, 40% to the city, 60% to CFL. And then the next $2 million, 50/50, the next $2 million after that, 45% to the city, 55% to CFL. And then above $7 million in sales, it's a 35/65 split of revenues. CFL has agreed to continue in Garden Grove doing its business as a point of sale until up to June 30, 2036, a little over 20 years. They've also agreed to invest a minimum of $8 million to further expand their business. Our consultant, Tiar West Advisors, has put together a report for us, and it's estimated CFL will get approximately $6.5 million over the 20 years, and the city will get $6.8 million in that 20-year period. Also, there will be new additional jobs generated by this agreement, and it will add 130 to 235 new jobs over the 20-year period. So at this time, staff recommends we conduct the public hearing and then attack, adopt the attached resolution, and then authorize city manager to execute the amended and restated operating agreement, including any minor modifications as appropriate, and pertinent documents necessary to effecuate and implement the agreement. And we also have both CFL and our consultant, Tiar West Advisors, here to answer questions to. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing now. I don't have any cards from the clerk. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Anybody? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt, sure, to adopt the resolution and authorize the city manager as stated by staff.
Move to approve. Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie, councilmember Phan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones, Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
Thank you. We have another public hearing, item 6B.
Yes, we have a public hearing on the district elections mapping process, and Maria Stipe and David Ely are here to provide that information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The purpose of this report is to receive an update on the first round of community input on the district election mapping process from demographer David Ely, provide sample voting district discussion maps for City Council consideration, and hold a public hearing to receive public input on district boundaries. On September 25, 2015, the City Council approved a settlement in a lawsuit brought against the city asserting the city's current at-large method of electing City Council members violates the California Voting Rights Act. Pursuant to the settlement, the city must replace the current at-large election process with a by-district election process beginning in 2016. As reported and acted on earlier tonight, the City Council approved new settlement terms, which will now include six council districts preserving an at-large mayor. In October 2015, the City Council approved an agreement with Compass Demographics to direct the process of creating districts. In coordination with Mr. Ely, a community participation plan was developed to gather public input on voting district boundaries and to facilitate the development of preliminary district map proposals. In accordance with the community participation plan, the city began outreach efforts, including but not limited to the following elements. The city established a dedicated webpage containing all notices and information on the district election mapping process with information in English, Spanish, Korean, and Chinese, and Vietnamese. An email address specific to voting district formation communications was also established. Additionally, city staff provided information to the public on district, the district, district mapping process through the city's social media accounts, press releases, posting notices in the city's regular posting locations, listings on the city's event calendar, information in the city's water bill inserts, emails to local community groups and residents, and a study session at the November 24, 2015 City Council meeting. Public input began with a series of meetings for interested stakeholders with Demographics mapping expert David Ely. Mr. Ely held 11 individual and small group meetings from November 30 to December 4, 2015, generally from 10 o'clock AM to 9 o'clock PM. Mr. Ely discussed how equal population districts might be distributed using a Garden Grove map with United States 2010 census population figures by census block groups to facilitate stakeholder efforts and input regarding communities of interest. He provided data tables to accompany sample discussion maps to convey demographic information expressed in percentages, including voting age population by ethnicity, Spanish and Asian surname registered voters, and Spanish and Asian surname voter turnout. The city offered interpreters for each of the individual meetings upon request. Following the small group meetings with key stakeholders, public input continued with three community meetings at various locations in the city on different days and times to accommodate the public. Each meeting had the same agenda. The meetings began with an educational presentation to inform the public about voting districts and the process for initial formation of district boundaries. The group then separated into small groups led by outreach facilitators to elicit participants' ideas about communities of interest, connections, barriers, divisions, and sample maps. The city provided Spanish, Korean, Chinese, and Vietnamese translators at all of the community meetings, and Mr. Ely will summarize the comments received thus far during these presentations during his presentation. Mr. Ely has created three sample voting district discussion maps and provided related data tables showing options for five districts. Based on input from the first round of individual and community meetings, it was determined that the sample maps provided a good representation of what final maps might look like, with some fine tuning based on community input. With the now transition to six council districts, this information will be incorporated into new sample discussion maps that reflect six districts. Going forward, Mr. Ely will hold a second round of meet-the-expert meetings beginning this Thursday, January 28, Friday, January 29, this Saturday, the 30th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. On Monday, on February 1, which is Monday, and Tuesday, February 2. A second round of community meetings will occur on March 2, 5, 9, and 12. These meetings will give the public another opportunity to provide input on discussion map proposals, which will now reflect six council districts. The City Council will hold a public hearing following the second round of meetings to consider final district proposals before May 31, 2016. It's recommended that the City Council receive and hear a presentation from Mr. David Ely of Compass Demographics regarding voting district discussion maps and the first round of voting district formation community participation meetings to gather input on district boundaries. Discuss voting district formation and voting district discussion maps, and hold a public hearing to receive public input on district boundaries. I'll now turn this presentation over to Mr. Ely for his update and presentation.
Thank you. I have a brief slide presentation here. At the, at the individual meetings and, and the public meetings, a portion of what we did was go over the general criteria for drawing districts. I showed this all to you previously in our study session, but there's a variety of things that are considered. Fortunately, most of what we're considering and most of what we've done in the first round is just as applicable to six districts as it is to five, so that we don't feel that we've wasted the process so far. I will need to create new sample maps, and so instead of providing draft maps to move forward tonight, I provided, I'll be showing you one six district sample map, and over the next few days, I'll generate some additional ones, and probably in a week or two, then I will generate some six district draft maps that can be the basis of more discussion going forward. In all of our meetings, we talked, we showed data and talked about the distribution of neighborhoods, other kinds of geography, school districts, and, and other legislative districts. We talked about political participation, voter registration rates, voter turnout. We talked about the demographic characteristics of the city, both in terms of population and ethnicity, and also socioeconomic characteristics with income, income, homeownership, age of housing, all those, those kinds of, those kinds of considerations. But most of our discussion was really about the functional geography of the city and how, how the city actually operates. We have demographic data for the city as a whole that, that we considered in this. One of the things that is... One of the things that is kind of an important aspect of this is the, is the ethnic breakdown of, of actual voters in different elections. And one thing that, that we can see is in, in the gubernatorial elections, especially in the 2014 election, it was a very low turnout election. And the Latino share of, of vote in that election was significantly lower than it is in the higher, higher turnout elections, and significantly lower than the, than the registration share. This map is sort of an example of the kind of demographic information that we look at that's showing the median, median household income. Shows a little bit of the characteristics of the city. All of the demographic maps that I show use a cold-to-hot color scheme, so a blue, blue and green colors are low, and red, orange are high with yellow in the middle. We provided information to people about the, the website that the city has, that has information that people can use to do their, to do their own, do their own analysis, data that's available as well as scheduling for meetings and that sort of thing. Included in the information that's on the website is a participation kit that will allow people to create their own maps. It was set up in such a way that was intended to be for five districts, but fortunately it works fine for any number of districts. And so it, it can be used equally well for doing six district maps. It basically includes a PDF map, which can be printed, that a person can draw districts on, and a spreadsheet that you can put in the assignments, and it will generate a, a report so that a person can tell what, what the total population is relative to what is necessary for each district and, and the basic demographic characteristics that I've provided in, in the reports for my sample maps. The primary, the primary thing in the public meetings that we did was a group exercise where we had maps of the city, large paper maps of the city, people gathered in groups around the table and discussed the functional geography of the city. So looking at neighborhoods and communities, looking at things that connect people, things that divide people, things that are barriers, important points of interest, and, and that sort of thing. And then they also, we also had people discuss the sample maps that had been provided and, and facilitated discussion so that those first public meetings weren't, weren't geared towards really having people give opinions particularly about different district configurations. They were more about discussion of the, of the functional geography of the city. So fortunately, all that information is just as applicable to six districts as it is to This is a picture of one of the maps that some people worked with. So we had individuals with highlighters marking up the maps, showing where particular locations where there were interests, of interest, drawing kind of potential district maps and that sort of thing. There was a number of things that were discussed, but some of the primary points that came out during the discussion, I summarized very briefly here. One is basically the, the characterization of the East, East Garden Grove areas where the Latino population is concentrated, that has significant common interests and should be respected in, in drawing districts. There was a lot of commentary about using, using major streets as the boundaries, both because they're natural barriers and because it's much easier to recognize the boundaries. There was some discussion of the, of the Muslim community and the location of some critical elements, or important, important facilities within that community. And discussion of the fact that on certain holidays and things, individuals of that faith don't drive their cars, they need to walk between, between different areas. And so there was an, an idea that keeping, keeping those facilities together within a district would facilitate representation that understood, understood those kinds of issues. Similarly, the Little Saigon District, people, people discussed that area as being an area that has a lot, a lot in common, and keeping it together in a district would be useful. There was discussion of the, this is the one item that doesn't work quite as well with six districts as it did with five. There's five high schools in the, in the district, and, and so the idea was that each district would have one high school. Can't quite do that with, with six districts, but the idea of distributing the high schools among the districts, I think is still an interesting one. And then there was some discussion of the, I guess that's Pacific Electric right-of-way. And the idea of distributing it among, among districts in a way that would allow council people to sort of collaborate together and work on possibly developing, developing that right-of-way for public use. And then there was additional discussion of using, using school areas and the boundaries from school districts in, in creating, creating districts.
Did anyone talk about keeping the Korean Business District together?
I don't think that anyone mentioned that specifically.
Because I noticed when that map, the line went straight through and divided the Korean Business District. Isn't that a community of interest?
Yes, it certainly, it certainly would be. That map was, was only one of, of a dozen or so different maps. So people, people sitting around the tables marking them up in different ways. But at least my summary notes, there's no mention of, of the Korean business community specifically. And then I have created one sample six district map, which is, this is its debut. It hasn't been shown anywhere yet. And the, the geography is, is fairly similar to, to what we had with five districts. Again, the West Garden Grove area is, is still too small to be a district by itself. So we have additional area coming over to Magnolia to, to bring up the population. The West, West Garden Grove, I mean, East Garden Grove area, in this sample, I've divided into, into two districts rather than having a single one because with five district, with the five district population, that's seemed to me cleaner to do it this way, although I will put together samples that, that do, do various alternative configurations there.
Could you hold that map for a second? I have a quick question. Regarding the settlement that was announced earlier today, would this sample map meet the settlement requirements, including having one Latino, is it Latino plurality? Is that how you say it, district?
Yes. Let me go to the, to the next table, which has, which has the data here. District five is the, is the most heavily Latino district here. And in the, the five district maps that we had done, we had a 43% Latino citizen voting age population. With, with District five here, it's a little bit higher than that. With alternative configurations, it could be a little bit higher still. But it is, it is still a very significant Latino plurality district. District six is, is also a district that's Latino plurality, although it's much closer to, you know, a three-way even, even division among the voting age citizens.
So based on the settlement, I, I just want to help us understand this because it's all very new to us that District, let's say this sample map is the map that the council approves, that District five would actually be up for election this year. Is that correct, Mr. Sandoval?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And as I said, I'll be generating some additional six district sample maps, and we'll have them available on the website over the next, over the next few days and be available for the individual meetings that we have going forward. And we plan to proceed pretty much on the same time schedule as, as we had, shifting gears from five districts to six, so that we are a little delayed in getting the drafts out there, but, but it won't be a very significant delay.
Okay. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please submit your cards to the clerk. If not, you can also hang out on our column yet then. First one up, Adrian Holm. Oh, actually, before I bring you up, sorry, thank you. We have four interpreters here in Vietnamese, Korean, Chinese, and Spanish. So would you please stand so that we can, the interpreters, you're, are you here, interpreters? Okay. Now, the thing is, the folks who don't understand English need to understand what I just said in those languages. So I think if you can go off one by one to introduce yourself and let folks know in the audience that you're available to interpret for them in the language that you're interpreting. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Yeah, we like you. Okay. Adrian Holm.
Mayor, city council, and staff, I don't have to say what I had prepared to say about the districts. I just want to thank you very much for your wise decision of letting us continue to elect our mayor at large. Thank you.
You guys must love me so much. Maureen Blackman. Maybe I shouldn't have sat back, because Tony Flores is coming up soon.
I don't have a lot of things to say about the district, except thank you for listening to what the people thought was their input. What I do want to ask the community to do is to really try to put your mind around it and really dig in, lend your talents and your thoughts to the process, come to the meetings, really think about what would be best for the community, and actually have your voice be heard. The demographer, I think, is an outstanding individual. What he needs is our flavor added to it. With his technical expertise and the statistics, I think we can make this a real winning success. I also have one other thing I want to say about, and I don't know who to address this to, is what about minimum requirements for residency to run, which would prevent, especially in the beginning, a candidate just renting a place here hilly-nilly and willy to get a spot on the council? Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell. Following Charles Mitchell will be Josh McIntosh and then Tony Flores.
I want to thank the council for reaching this settlement of six districts. This is something that many of us in the community worked on diligently for a long period of time to come up with a system of setting up districts. And I'm glad that the demographer was able to use the input from these meetings that we put together to be able to come up with something that works for the city. Again, the biggest issue that we had was having a mayor elected at large so that the people in the city have the opportunity to select their leader, rather than having it rotated through a five-member council, which leaves us with no option if we find that we are unhappy with who we have as the acting mayor. So again, I want to thank you for working with the city and with the population to come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Well, there's not much to say that hasn't been said, but I want to second just about everything we've been told here tonight. And two of the points Maureen brought up are very, very important. The first is setting some type of regulation on who can run so we don't have carpet bagging and people from Anaheim coming over and trying to create these Disney districts. And we can handle this. We, we have people in our own neighborhoods that should stand up and become representative of their neighborhood. And I would encourage everyone at home who's even thinking about it to start thinking about what I could do to make my city better and consider becoming a councilperson representing your neighborhood. Also, I'd like to thank everybody that worked together to come up with the settlement and get this done and move behind us and actually move ahead. So again, thank you, everyone.
Tony Flores.
Thank you, mayor, staff. Yeah, I, I guess after listening to the demographer, isn't that your title? I've been working this for like 16 years, districts. And with Dr. Eugene Zalusik, maybe we oversimplified it, but we did it as, as just voters. We didn't look at age, ethnicity, Muslims here, Koreans there, Little Saigon. We didn't do it that way. And I think we seem to be taking it off in, in a, in a different area. If you look at what we did, and you'll be, you'll, she'll see me on, on Saturday with all the documents, and, and maybe some of you have seen it, maybe some of you haven't. But I've got quite a bit of information on, on districts. And it's just had to do with precincts, number of voters, and chopping the city up so we make sure that we had representation. We didn't go into this, this other stuff that I, I think we're drifting in the wrong era. I mean, we talk about, it's, it's segregated. I think if Dr. Martin Luther King were looking at this stuff, he'd be scratching his head right now. I mean, is this what we really want to base it on? I mean, it, it should be just voting. We're, we're American voters. I don't know if we want to get this detailed, but I think we're taking it in the wrong direction. And believe me, I'm all for districts. I mean, I'd be a hypocrite if I said no. But the way it's going, the way it's looking, I, I'm not sure if, if this is the way I wanted to see it. But I'll be there with my information, and I'll see if I can get Dr. Eugene Zalusik to show up with me, and we'll, we'll put it out to you with all this, without all this other stuff, just, just voters and representation, but, but without segregation.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Dibs?
Yeah, I'm turned in a car.
Oh, you did? Okay. You can step forward now. Oh, yeah, I guess it's right here. Sorry.
Okay. I'm Nicholas Dibs, and I spoke earlier about the Youth in Government Day, but let's move on to the, the maps. I've been a teacher since 92 and working for the school districts since 2001. And of course, the school district has already gone through this process with five districts. So you have that as kind of a, a model you can use. But then also, the city of Long Beach has nine districts, and they went through this process at some point back when. So I would suggest that we also consider, the council and the demographer, consider looking at the city of Long Beach and perhaps other cities that have already implemented district, districts, and, and see how that fit, what their data is for each district, and compare it to Garden Grove, do some analysis that way. The California Voter Rights Act, just to respond to Tony's comments, has, I believe, requirements for certain ethnicities. So that's why I think... requirements for certain ethnicities, so that's why I think there's an issue on including minority groups being able to have some sort of representation on the council. Now, I want to second the comments on length of residency. It's important, and again, you can look at the city of Long Beach and other, and city of LA and other cities that have districts, and see what they have for their requirements for residency, so we don't, so we can avoid the carpet bagging issue. So I appreciate your, the opportunity to speak, and thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else out there want to speak? Okay. Anybody?
Me.
Okay. And if you're thinking you'd like to speak, please be prepared to move towards the podium. All right, Mr. John Goodman?
I'm John Goodman. I've been living in the city about 20 years now. I would like to underline that I agree with the notion of having districts by communities of interest, however they may be defined, religiously, ethnically, or elsewise. And I also want to suggest that it would be important on the maps, when we finally get to the end, to identify where, in which of the six districts each of the present council members lives, and which of those council districts are up for election. That needs to be important when we're looking at the final district map. Those are the only two things.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is your last call. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now, and there were some comments made that require some legal clarification to dispel any kind of misunderstanding out there. So I'm going to hand it over to legal counsel.
The, the two items I want to address is right off the bat. In terms of the incumbents, the settlement does stipulate that the demographer and the city council will not consider incumbency in, as in drawing districts. That issue has been litigated in other California Voter Rights Act cases, and the plaintiffs in this case and the city council agreed to not make it an issue. So per the settlement, the demographer will not be looking at the incumbents, where they currently reside, and considering where, you know, where the lines will be drawn. In terms of the other, the second item I want to address, the California Voter Rights Act, like the Federal Voter Rights Act, does have some guidelines in determining districts. The, the most major one would be that they have to be as equal in population as possible. And then the other guidelines are the ones that the demographer indicated in his report that he is considering when drawing the different lines. And the last item has to do with residency. Our city is a general law city, so we have to follow the general laws of the state of California. The California Government Code and Elections Code already determines the residency requirements for members of the city council, including the mayor. We cannot change that unless we become a charter city like Long Beach or Santa Ana. They can guide their own election system and even have their own elections outside of the California election dates. We have to follow California government and Elections Code requirements. So again, the residency and the requirements have already been set by state law. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have, and if I can't answer them, I'll try and punt to the demographer or whoever else is an expert on the area.
Thank you.
No questions?
No questions? Okay, let's see. I hope that answers all the questions out there. No?
Quick clarification.
Sure, I'll entertain that. I'm sorry, Mr. Goodman, what'd you say?
What is the residency requirement?
To sum it up, to sum it up, you have to be registered to vote in the city, and when we go to districts, you have to be registered in that district to be able to run for a seat in that district. And the law says that if you move your residence and domicile, then you automatically vacate office.
Okay. Okay, okay.
How long? I'll have to double check on the law on that, but the city clerk knows.
City clerk?
At the time, the nomination papers are taken out.
Okay.
We double check the residency.
Great. So when you pull papers?
When you pull papers.
For office, and you got to get some signatures too, you got to make sure you're living in the district in which you're running for, you got to be at least 18 years of age, you better be a registered voter, and hopefully you've voted in local elections too and paid attention, but those are the minimum requirements. Okay. All right. So thank you, staff and Compass, Mr. Ely, for the report. I guess, you know, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the report tonight.
Minor issue, you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, public hearing is closed. I think I closed that earlier, just was entertaining some folks there. Any motion to accept the report?
I'll move, I'll make that motion, accept the report.
Second, any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
Okay, let's move on here. We have item 7A.
Yes, item 7A is an appointment to the planning commission?
Yes.
By the mayor?
Yes. So I have an application here after calling for applications to the planning commission, and I'm moving to appoint Michael Barker to fill the vacancy on the planning commission. And you have in front of you the application? If there are any questions? Mr. Barker, you're here? Okay, great, stand by, just in case. Yeah, why don't you please step up to the podium? Okay, thank you. So I have moved to appoint Michael Barker to the planning commission. I'd like to hear a second.
Before I second, I would like to say I read your background, Mr. Barker. I'm very impressed, so thank you for stepping forward to helping us out.
Oh, thank you for considering my application.
And with that, I'll make, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is there a second? You made the motion, he seconded it?
Okay, yes. Okay.
Is there any, only question, there's no issue with having a couple members absent at this time? Three votes, would we require three votes?
It just requires three votes.
Yes.
Unless, unless you-
Well, it requires two votes, which is a majority of Quorum. Right, right. It's just as a courtesy to the other two who are not here, but since they're not here, we can vote on this.
Well, you know, I, I'd be happy to delay this, you know, and if you really want to have the other two members, but, you know, we have a vacancy, and we have some business on the planning commission that we should, you know, get going on. So I want to fill all the vacancies. Well, right now, there's only one.
And although I respect Councilmember, Councilmember Beard's request, I think had Councilman Bowie or Mayor Protem Jones had any issues, they probably brought that up before leaving. So I would be comfortable with going forward with the vote at this time.
You know, I don't think they're able to bring it up before leaving, because that's the violation of the Brown Act, is that correct, legal counsel?
No, it's on the agenda today. They were, they were here during the meeting, they just left before the meeting continued.
Okay, well, I didn't hear anything, so. Let's vote, there's been a motion, there's been a second.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Mr. Barker.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some items for consideration here.
Yes, the first item is approval of funding for the 800 megahertz backbone and radios, and Kingsley Okuriki is here to provide that report.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, with this item, our staff is requesting that you approve the funding plan for the purchase and replacement of public safety emergency mobile radios, consoles, and the city of Gaddingrove's locable share of the cost of upgrades to the Orange County 800 megahertz countywide coordinated communication system. This is a system that is utilized by police department, fire department, and public works department. And by way of history, the Gaddingrove is a party to a joint agreement, and I believe the latest agreement in place is dated in 2005. And in that agreement, along with other cities in Orange County, the city is a party for the operational maintenance and financial management of that system, the 800 megahertz system. The agreement provides for the funding, management, governance of the 800 megahertz system in the county. And currently, as reported by the lead agency, the system is becoming obsolete, and there have been discussions with cities and other participants over the past year to replace and upgrade that system. And so far, it entails, once the system is upgraded, the radios that currently work with the existing system will no longer work. So they need to also, each of the agencies purchase new radios, and I understand those radios have to be Project 25 compliant. And maybe, I don't understand what that means, but the fire and police people can explain that in detail if you wish. They have, the lead agency, as I said before, the Orange County Communications, along with all the parties, so far, they have worked up the nature of the upgrade that is being, that will be implemented, and also the cost associated with it. So far, Gaddingrove's allocation of the cost, it includes $1.26 million approximately for the backbone, and not to exceed the amount of $3.38 million for the, towards the purchase of new system radios and console equipment. Now, we have considered several ways of funding this item. The first option that was being considered was Orange County Communications Group was actually trying to organize a group of cities to see if they can do some bulk financing for the backbone portion of it. But that has since fallen our part. As of two days, yesterday, Monday, I got, I got a call from the county, and also in one of the meetings that our fire chief was attending, they reported that, you know, they are disbanding that Orange County funding mechanism. The other option that we have with regards to the radios is that we have to purchase them directly from Motorola, they are the sole source, and they are offering some deep discounts if you pay cash, and we do plan to take advantage of that. So essentially, we are left to fund this thing internally, and the mechanism that we are recommending to you to fund this is that we recommend, we are recommending that we take the total cost of buying this equipment, the backbone, and the radios out of our vehicle fund. We do have sufficient monies accumulated in our vehicle funds to replace vehicles. And the, the, looking at the vehicle fund, we've analyzed it and looked at it over the next five to 10 years. If we take approximately $4.3, $4.6 million out of that to fund the, this radios, it will not jeopardize the city's ability to replace whether fire vehicles, police vehicles, or any of the water or seaweed vehicles. So we're still good there. And the structure that we are proposing here is that we take it upfront and fund it over 10 years. So essentially, over the next 10 years, we'll be paying back the vehicle fund through budget appropriations to return this original principal plus interest. And interest will be set at whatever our internal portfolio earnings is at, at the end of the year. So that's what we're proposing. Now, in addition to that, we know that now that we're replacing the system 15 years from now, we're going to have the need to also replace the system again. So we are proposing here to set aside additional funds, perhaps $200,000 in addition to the debt service, paying back the vehicle fund, to accumulate that money so that the next time it comes around to replace the radios or the backbone, at least we'll have some sizable chunk of money that we can apply towards it and not burden the budget on our new basis at that time. So that's the basics of the plan. But with that plan, we need to create a communications replacement fund through which all this activity would take place, and it would be one of our internal service funds. Within that fund, all the monies that will, you know, residual monies will be accumulated in there for replacement purposes down the road. And on our new basis, the general fund, along with sewer and water fund, will have to budget for monies that will be used to pay back whatever we're taking out of the vehicle replacement fund, and also each of those funds' allocation of the additional $200,000, $200,000 we need to accumulate in, in the communications fund for future replacement purposes. So with that, our staff is recommending that, one, you approve the creation of this internal replacement fund for communications, public safety communications fund. Secondly, to approve the internal financing plan with the requisite amount being transferred from the vehicle fund to the communication fund to buy this required radios at a discount, and also fund our share, the Gaddingrove share of the backbone upgrade. And finally, to authorize the annual budget allocation of $600,000 from our benefiting departments and funds, and the funds are basically general fund, water fund, and the sewer funds. As part of the annual budget process, we can allocate those funds to pay back what we borrowed from the vehicle fund and also accumulate funds for future replacements. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
So we're looking at bringing $600,000 annually into this new fund?
Yes.
Okay. And that's going to come from where?
Well, part of it will come from the general fund, part of it will come from the water fund, and part of it from the sewer fund. Those three operations of the city, the fire department and the police are largely general fund. We also have our water department that uses those radios, as well as our sewer department for their operations. So where will I locate that $600, $600,000, based on the number of radios that is used by each of the departments? So the bulk of it will come out of general fund.
And, Mr. Mayor, members, council, I might also add, our three departments that are the biggest users of our vehicle, that use most of our vehicles, would be the fire department, the police department, and public works department. So, you know, the finance director, myself, other folks, we've had internal discussions with each one of those three department directors, also talking about how do we make sure we keep, we're still able to keep all of their vehicles in life cycle, able to be replaced. One of the nice things, I think, that the finance director would tell us by do, by handling this internally, we may actually save some additional resources than if we would have tried to participate in some of the other funding options that Tony might have tried to offer earlier, I believe, as well. So we think there's some, just some, actually some long-term savings that we might realize that might actually, in the long term, help strengthen the vehicle replacement fund. I hope that's accurate, Mr. Finance Director.
That's correct.
Okay. And how, how many cities are we in communication with here?
In terms of the backbone system?
Yes.
I don't know the exact count, I don't know if, the fire chief is here, he can answer that, how many cities are participating.
Okay, great. Hi, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Yeah, every city in Orange County, in every district, police, fire, and special districts that have a law enforcement, fire, or public works division, use this 800 megahertz radio system. So collaboratively, all of us are paying our share based on the number of radios or users that we have. So proportionately, the Gaddingrove share is appropriate, and the overall number is quite large. And unfortunately, with the radio systems, it seems, as, as the finance director said, about every 10 to 15 years, the technology kind of goes out like our TVs do, and they have to do a major upgrade, and unfortunately, the scale and the cost is quite sufficient. The overall region has kind of delayed this for the last four to five years, and now the time has finally come to where regionally, as a county, we have to pay for this backbone, which is the backbone of the system, if you will, and all these associated radios that we use as well. So, yeah, we're paying just specifically the Gaddingrove share, and we try to be as economical and just use the radios we need and not, you know, purchase more stuff than we need, so that we're, you know, being responsible with the taxpayers' money.
Thank you. Any other question?
Yeah, just the assumption would be that we're getting a new system, so it's state-of-the-art, it's, it's more efficient, it's more effective. it's, it's more efficient, it's more effective, and it's everything we need as a city communicating with other cities and other respondents.
Yes, absolutely. This is the newest, cutting-edge system, which will allow for a greater degree of interoperability, which is really in the, the national response plan is what we're looking for, is that every entity, whether your public works, fire, or police, we can communicate with each other, different cities. So it really gives us more resilience in our response and our interoperability, which is what this radio does. It also does what they're calling narrowbanding, which is the new format for radios, because they're opening up other channels, the wide bands, to other markets to sell off those wider bands. So all public safety, and us are moving to more of a narrow band, which is what this radio does.
Okay. And Chief, what is the life cycle for this purchase?
We hope that it will be similar to the past life cycle, which was about fifteen to eighteen years. And generally speaking, I would imagine fifteen to eighteen years from now, again, the same thing will happen. That tends to be the cycle with the, these radio systems. So kind of having a sinking fund, if you will, that plans for it next time around, I think would be a real wise thing, to allow us to be prepared for it financially moving forward.
Thanks, Chief. Historically, have we planned for it before, and we just didn't have enough funds, or is this the first time we've gone to the planning mode?
Well, this is the first time. In the past, we've actually just participated, paid for it, but we, we're kind of doing, if you will, if I can use the term sinking fund, so that we, you know, much like everything else that, you know, we do, like with our vehicles or with all the other internal service activities, we like to set aside money so that it's not a huge burden or a huge surprise when we have to replace it. And that's essentially what we, part of what we're doing here.
Thank you, Kinsley.
And one last question. Our, our cost is over four million dollars. What's the total cost, you know, for the whole system?
I do not, I'd be, I'd be giving my best estimate of that, but imagine there's, I think at least, there's like thirty-two entities within the county, and we're probably a midsize, so I think we could probably multiply that times thirty-two or so and get that total number. It's a fairly sufficient, fairly large number, yeah.
Okay. Are we in a tender motion to approve the creation of the communications replacement fund, approve the internal financing plan as stated, and also approve the annual budget allocation as stated?
So moved?
Second. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, eight B.
Yes, item eight B is award of independent financial auditor contract to Davis Farr LLP for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen through fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, and Ellis Chang is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor Nguyen, and members of the city council. Tonight I have before you a five-year contract with two additional option years for independent financial auditor services. City council retains an independent firm to conduct an annual audit of the city financial statements. The auditors are tasked with reviewing internal controls and auditing the financial statements via trans, financial transaction sample selections and analytical review of the balance sheet and income statement to ensure the city's financial management practices and statements conform with generally accepted accounting principles and related government accounting standards. Additionally, the auditors also provide other services, including a review of major city contracts, such as the contract for refuse disposal and the management contract for the Willow Golf Course, to ensure that the contractor is in compliance with the contract terms. As previously presented to council, the city obtained an unmodified audit opinion for fiscal year fourteen fifteen from our current audit firm, Macias, Genia, and O'Connell. As the audit, as the contract with the current firm expires upon the completion of the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen audit and related services, the city solicited proposals for audit and other related services and received seven proposals. The city, as a matter of accounting and financial prudence, periodically reexamines the independent financial audit relationship and contract, and takes the opportunity to work with the new firm as a chance to have a fresh set of eyes on its financial and accounting practices. A source selection committee comprised of two staff and one outside participant evaluated each proposing firm's technical qualifications, engagement team qualifications, and pricing. Based on the evaluation, Davis Farr LLP was the top proposer. Davis Farr is a regional firm with a substantial presence in California. The firm and its proposed engagement team have significant experience in governmental accounting and auditing. Some of its clients in the Orange County area include the cities of Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, and Villa Park. The engagement partner, Jennifer Farr, is here this evening to answer any questions regarding the audit firm at the conclusion of this presentation. It is recommended that city council award a contract to the highest scoring proposer, Davis Farr LLP, as the city's independent auditor for fiscal years two thousand fifteen through two thousand sixteen, and through fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, and two thousand twenty, including two additional option years for audit and other additional services outlined in this proposal, and appropriate necessary funds, including additional option years, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the agreement, making minor modifications as necessary, and approve two additional option years for audit and other additional services as outlined in the proposal. This concludes the presentation. Staff and the audit engagement partner, Jennifer Farr, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
Okay, we have nine A.
Yes, nine A is ordinance number two eight six three entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, approving amendment number A zero one five two zero one five, amending Title Nine of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to update the city's land use regulations pertaining to cannabis dispensaries, delivery, and cultivation, and to confirm that use is not specifically identified in a zoning district or prohibited in that district, is presented for second reading and adoption."
Mayor members of the city council, this matter, this is an ordinance that was introduced at your last meeting, is before your for second reading and adoption. At the last meeting, you asked about AB twenty-one, which is the bill that would remove the March first deadline for cultivation before the state could preempt the city's ability to regulate cultivation. That bill, although it has passed the Senate, it has been sent back to the Assembly, the reports we're getting is that the earliest that the Assembly will take it up is this Thursday. And then it would, if it passes, it would go to the governor, and we still don't know how the governor would react to the bill. Given that we don't know, you know, still being in the legislature, our recommendation is for you to go ahead and adopt this ordinance. Again, it doesn't preclude the city council from taking up this issue at a later date, and we already have direction from the council to study the issues, to bring back at a, at a later date. If you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Hasn't the governor indicated that he would sign AB twenty-one?
The legal cities has reported that, yes.
Okay. So it's going back to the full vote at the Assembly on Thursday, and that would put it on the governor's desk for his signature. That's, is that correct?
That is correct. This is a gut and redo bill. It was dormant in the Senate for a while, so it was gutted and rewritten. So that's why it restarted in committees in the Senate. We don't know if, if the Assembly is going to send it to committee for additional amendments. We just don't know at this point. The indication by the league is that it will move forward.
Sure, sure. You know, my concern is that at the last meeting, we had a lot of folks come. We had a parent come here and speak about his daughter who needed the medication. We had young marine vets, we had, you know, other veterans. We had a business owner here in the city of Garden Grove, and he spoke about how this would literally prohibit his current business from operating, and that currently, they're paying taxes to the county and not to the city of Garden Grove. You know, I personally think that if you're doing business here, you should pay taxes to the city of Garden Grove, and we're losing out on that. So my concern is, if we pass this, thirty days goes into effect, I want to have assurances for that, you know, that business owner, so that we don't, you know, enforce on this, because that's really not the spirit of the council here, to enforce on this. As you've heard from our deliberation at the last meeting, that's really not our intent. Our intent is to preserve local control, not to push this existing business out of town. So I, I want to see if there's a possibility for staff to introduce a moratorium on this enforcement at the next meeting, you know, just so I have that assurance for that business here in our city.
If I may, just really quickly, we currently do have a ban on dispensaries, and currently cultivation is only allowed in residential zones. So even if you don't pass this bill, unless you're in a residential zone, these businesses will not be able to cultivate, and cultivation is not allowed at a commercial rate. The only commercial cultivation is allowed in the utilities right of ways for nurseries, and, and they have, it's specifically in the municipal code, allowed for nurseries. Cultivation is allowed in residential because it acknowledges that some individuals may have gardens, you know, to grow their, their own vegetables. So in order to allow cultivation at this level, we would still need legislation by the city council and amending the zoning code to identify the areas where you would allow cultivation. We, we currently don't have an agricultural zone.
Okay, that being the case, I, I wonder if my colleagues would join me in giving direction to staff, to have staff present the planning commission with this item to rezone, so that we can protect this business that's currently existing, and then also, as, as we got directed in a previous meeting, to move towards bringing this to the voters, to lift the ban and to begin taxing.
So as I understand right now, this business is operating illegally in our city?
Right? Omar?
Correct.
Okay. So basically by us putting a moratorium on this business, we're basically endorsing an illegal act?
True.
Well, we're the ones, as a legislative body, who have that ability and that power to enforce and also to interpret those laws that are on our books.
And because today we are short-staffed, as far as the rest of the other council members, I am not ready to make any sea lane changes without all inputs. Therefore, I'm going to stay the course, and I will, do you have a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay, I would make the motion to approve the second reading, and as far as the enforcement of that business being illegally in our city, we've taken no action since they've been here, correct, to close them or any to that effect, my understanding, right?
Correct.
So therefore, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we are going to tell our officers now to go and close the shop. So I don't think we need to have any assurance from the city or anybody else. We'll just stay the course, go with this reading so that we can actually retain local control, and then perhaps by the second or the next council meeting, we can bring this issue up with all of us here to discuss.
Sure, well, I'll just make it very clear that I hope that this is not give indication to go ahead and move forward to enforce on this particular business. I think it would be singling them out. They've already come and spoken to us here, they've already indicated that they're willing to pay taxes in our city, they're currently paying taxes to the county, they've been operating here in our city. I just want to put it out there that, you know, this is not indication from our council that we want to get rid of them. So I just want to make that very clear. Certainly, you know, as we had all deliberated at the last council meeting, our intent in passing this is solely to maintain local control until the state removes, and, and I believe that the state will, with the governor's signature, remove that March first deadline with AB twenty-one.
With it, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion passed with three yes votes.
Okay. We have matters here from our city manager, and also from, I believe, the, the item that was placed here by Mr. Beard at the last meeting. And I guess Mr. Bowie is not here for item ten C, so let's move that on to the next agenda. Okay.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know it's a little unfortunate because we've, Mr. Bowie and Mr. Mayor Protem Jones are not here. This is, item ten A is not an item that we need or are expecting any council to vote on anything tonight. This was kind of more of an informational session, just about kind of the state of State Route twenty-two as it relates to billboards. You know, we get questions from time to time about, you know, billboards, can billboards be put up along the twenty-two freeway? There are pretty significant restrictions with Caltrans upon, regarding freeway landscaped areas, and so there are pretty heavy restrictions about where, if any, companies could relocate additional bill, billboards along the twenty-two freeway. So there are serious limitations. There's also differences, and I'm going to have the planning staff just talk about this briefly, we'll try and abbreviate our presentation tonight since we're missing a couple council members, but there are significant differences between billboards and outdoor advertising, I think is the term, signs, such as the one, or what's the terminology?
It's onsite.
Onsite advertising. So we've got, we've got the issue of billboards along the twenty-two freeway, and then we have onsite advertising, such as the Garden Grove Simpson Chevrolet billboard that's along the twenty-two freeway. That, in that particular case, that's a billboard that is owned by the city through the Department of Finance, owned by them, but Simpson Chevrolet has an easement to allow us to get on to maintain that sign. In that particular case, this sign is starting to become a little weathered, a little dated, it, it has maintenance issues. We don't particularly, we don't have the funds to maintain it, but in that particular case, we've got a business that says, you know, he's willing to, you know, maintain, replace, fix up that sign. But at some point, you will remember from a month or two ago, we, we delayed removing that billboard from the, I think, the recognized obligation payment schedule. We do need to revisit that at some point and get some direction about what to do with that sign. It is owned by the Department of Finance, and we want to talk about that in just a little bit as part of this. So having said that, what I've done is, I've asked the planning staff to just give you a quick little overview about what that map shows in front of you. I don't know if we're going to have that up on the screen?
No, we don't have it up on the screen.
We don't?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Hill and Mr. Marino are going to just give us a little information about that, and at the end, we might just ask for some of your thoughts about what we're thinking about some of this.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mayor and council. What Carl handed out in front of you is a map that we prepared that shows existing, well, let me back up. There's two types of signs that we're going to talk about tonight. One is what's called onsite, on-premise signs, which are signs like the Hyundai sign that only advertises their business, and then the off-site signs, which are the electronic billboards or what we call the static billboards. And before you is a map that shows the locations of some of those signs, and also some potential locations where signs could be placed. And we also placed before you a copy of the code regarding, the city code regarding electronic billboards that the council approved in October of two thousand fourteen, when Clear Channel came in and requested an electronic and requested an electronic billboard. When the city approved this amendment, what it did was it approved the relocation of existing billboards. The code actually had allowed the static billboards throughout the city. Billboard companies could request that they be relocated elsewhere within the city. I've been here for about 10 years and much longer than that. We had been getting requests from electronic, from billboard companies to put electronic billboards along the freeway. About nine years ago, we kind of did a study just to look at it and then it fell to the wayside. And then when Clear Channel came back in, we decided this is the time to look at really closely where they could potentially be located if it was something that the city wanted to do. But in order to allow these, these billboards to be relocated adjacent to the freeway and have them as electronic billboards, then the city approved this code amendment. We had to amend the code. But along with that, because of aesthetic impacts, the, the agreement was for every electronic billboard face that was set, that was placed along the freeway, two of the static ones throughout the city faces had to be removed. With Clear Channel, because theirs is just finished construction, but it's not turned on yet, that one, with, they have two faces, signed faces out there, they removed four of the static ones throughout the city. Two along Westminster Boulevard and two along Garden Grove Boulevard. The, and along with that, what we did was we looked at the whole corridor of the 22 freeway and we defined an area of what we called the, the 22 freeway corridor. It's 300 feet on either side of the freeway. Do we want to give one of these to? You got it. And the reason why we defined, the reason why we defined a specific area is because we had some discussions about trying to create a specific plan, we felt, or a, or a sign overlay, but we felt that this was actually, that would be a little bit more cumbersome and this was actually a way to do it that, to place the signs, that really made sense. We also, when we created that corridor, we went back to what we heard from the community on preserving the residential zones back in 2008 when we amended the general plan. And so there were very few areas where you could actually put digital billboards. This map before you looks like there's quite a few places, but what we've done is we've also located, we've showed locations of where some of the onsite premise signs are, like the Toyota reader board, Toyota Nissan electronic sign, the Hyundai sign, Chevrolet's bill, it's a redevelopment billboard sign. Chevrolet has come to us and asked if they could actually replace that with an electronic sign. So we placed that on there and then of course we've shown where the Clear Channel digital sign billboard is, the Volkswagen reader board sign, and then some other potential sites that are, that meet the distance requirements that we put in place in code from the residential zones. Since this, since the Clear Channel sign was approved, we have had another billboard company that has come in and is looking to possibly place two signs on the fre, along the freeway. So tonight is, like Scott had mentioned, what we're really looking to see is just kind of what your thoughts are before we even move forward with anything else.
And, you know, I might, might add to, so just looking at the, at the map for one second, you'll see that there's, I guess there's two areas where he's identified as potential sites. So in, in one case, there's a potential site for a billboard over by New Hope along the 22. That's in more of an industrial area. When I talked to the planning staff about it, that would be an area that we might not have as much sort of heartburn about a location there as we might at another potential site that's closer to where the existing Chevrolet freeway sign is right now. You see there's a proposed outdoor media digital billboard. And so that's closer to some residential areas, potentially, you know, could have more impact to people, but we haven't spent, you know, we really haven't spent too much time, you know, on that. But you kind of just, by looking at this, you can kind of see how the planning staff and in general, how we're looking at this stuff to try and, you know, decide, should we be entertaining some of these offers? Should we not? You know, there's, there's important revenue that could be possible to the city, but, and in some of these cases, by approving them, you'd also be removing, I think, two for the, two billboards to add one. So, so the, I guess the point of this was just to share some of this information with you tonight. We're not expecting any voting on anything. We don't have anything to bring forward to you, but just to let you know that we're, you know, we're talking to people all the time about these. So absent you telling us under no circumstances show you ever talked to anybody about any billboard signs, we'll continue to see if there's anything that we would want to ever bring forward to you. And then more immediately though, I think we do have to give some thought and probably need to come back to you pretty quickly soon about what we're going to do about the Simpson Chevrolet sign that's there. I think it does require some maintenance. It is in need of, of something, either replacement, refurbishment, whatever. And here we've got a business that wants to come forward and pay the cost to do that. But we have to take that particular billboard through the Department of Finance, I believe, to get them to agree to, I guess, absolve themselves or release it from their list of, of
Assets.
Assets that they have.
Right.
Right.
You know, the other thing with these, with the digital billboards, there is a lot of money involved in these and so there, it's very competitive between all the billboard companies. And so we get different stories of where, where they think they could be located along the freeway. And that's another reason why we went through this exercise. With the Clear Channel billboard, when that went in, we did have an environmental, and we do environmental zombies, and they do pay a aesthetic impact fee because they do have an impact. Even though they are removing billboards throughout the city, which is definitely a plus, we do have them also, because they're, because of the aesthetic impact, pay a, pay a relocation fee on that. We've looked at other cities and seen what they have collected and that, it seems to be a revenue source for the city, but it's also an aesthetic thing for the city too. And so that's why we want to get your thoughts on where you want us to go with these.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Go ahead. I think I'm fine with exploring the options that we have as far as where to put them on the freeway, talking to possible vendors. I'd just probably invite the, the city to be cognizant of, aside from the revenues that it generates, to perhaps in any deals we may have, to include options for like nonprofits in the city, to advertise at no cost perhaps, just to make sure that our community's getting the bang for the bargain. And just be cognizant of if it's close to residential areas, to have much of a finer lens on it so that we don't have any issues that would impact the, you know, the lives and the welfare of our folks in the city.
Mr. Beard?
Yeah, well, I'll comment and give you my input on this. I think it's a good start for a plan or a program. That's what that represents to me. I don't know if too many cities have freeways like this running through them in the center. So I think this is, there's opportunities, there's challenges involved with something like this. I think the revenue aspect's one. We're a business-friendly community and this promotes the auto mall. Obviously, the impact to the community is very important, so we can weigh that as well. And the, the technology with signs is amazing, I think. I don't think these represent a major eyesore aesthetic problem per se, or, or we can mitigate any impact. And we can consider all the issues related to where the land is, what the, the redevelopment aspects of it, the lingering effects of where it's located, consolidation of other old signs. So I think this is a good start in concentrating on, taking a comprehensive look at it. I think we should be open to opportunities for where they may be and we do it by case by case, or we have a strategy of, of the overall area, some aesthetic or architectural considerations, does it all fit together?
Visual, that sort of maps it all out of existing sites and potential sites and sort of looking at the full span of the 22 freeway from kind of a pan back 30,000-foot perspective. So I think it's great work that you guys did this and certainly throughout the years, I've heard all the buzz from individual applicants or, you know, potential applicants that, everybody from the car dealerships to the billboard companies to you name it, that have an idea of something that they want to try and bring forward. Caltrans has their own constraints about where you can put signs and whatever permitting process you have to go through if it's in a landscape buffer and all that stuff. So I think there's really only certain places that they could go, but I'm certainly open to looking at, by all means, along the 22. I've also heard buzz about some interest in this from some of our hoteliers on Harbor Boulevard. I think we should be open to exploring that also. We've got our single biggest economic development driver in town obviously is the hotels. It's our proximity to the 20 million-plus tourists that come through Disneyland every year and we enjoy the benefit of being on the periphery of that on Harbor Boulevard between Chapman and the 22 freeway. And we've done some major hotel deals there and we've still got some coming up. So I've, I've heard some interest from some of those. I think we should be open to considering this along Harbor Boulevard as we sort of master plan this out. But by all means, I'd say go full speed ahead and see what we can accommodate. It's great when we can get these guys to eliminate some billboards, to put up a new one on the freeway. And like I said, the mitigating measures that are available to these digital signs these days are fabulous. I mean, they, they want these things to shine in the direction of cars, not in the direction of neighbors. They don't want to waste, spill light on neighbors any more than the neighbors want to see them. So they're directional, they dim down at night when they can be, lower light levels and still be seen. They're actually brighter during the day and they dim down at night and they're sophisticated. They're smart machines that, that dim and adjust and can be angled and shielded in such a way where they don't really create much of an actual impact. And I realize there's sort of a perceived impact that goes along with these, but like I said, I've gone through the learning curve and I'm not allergic to it and I'm ready to talk to it. For anybody who sees it differently, I think they just need an education.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the public more on this issue, particularly those that are living around the proposed sites. I, I don't know what the impact is. Certainly there is an impact fee, aesthetic impact fee, and I'm curious whether there's been any lawsuits to cities at all from residents in terms of the impact or how these things are put up along the freeways and whatnot. Has there been any kind of litigation or lawsuits of this source, Mr. Sandoval? Not necessarily here, but?
Right, I was going to say, not here.
Well, that's good.
And most of the losses that I'm aware of are actually brought by these companies, not by the residents. They're brought by the billboard companies.
Oh, okay.
Like for being unreasonably denied or something or?
Well, I'm aware of, of one recent being brought against Fountain Valley. But in, long time ago, when the state of California started enforcing the Outdoor, Outdoor Advertising Act, they were suing on the basis of a property right, that they had a property right on the leasehold and they were suing over being taken down too early. They wanted relocation assistance, you know, you know, all those issues. That has come down quite a bit, so that's not necessarily an issue today. But I'm not aware
Okay.
Of, of citizen lawsuits opposing.
Yeah, I'm just interested in learning more, open to the idea. Speaking of billboards though, the, the inch, inch sign, is that still up, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Because they have not proceeded to seek out the, the new monument sign proposal. There's not a, there's not a specified timeframe at the moment for them to be in compliance, but they have the opportunity to become in compliance. But yes, their sign is still up there in the air.
So their sign is still up?
Yes.
Even though they're in violation? They're in a public?
They're legal non-conforming, so they don't have to take it down right at the moment. But when it comes time to comply, the, the objective is for them to put in a monument sign per the Harbor Corridor Sign Plan Program.
Okay. I'm just curious when it's going to be their time to comply because it looks like our sidewalk had to go around their sign. Isn't that enough for them to comply?
I'm just sure there's not a timeframe on this.
I have not, I don't know much about that sign today.
Because there, there's like a lot of debate on that sign, you know, and they're in violation of our municipal code.
Right.
And they're in our public right of way.
Those are the situations where sign owners, you know, will pursue a litigation. But again, it hasn't come up to, to my level yet, but if it's a pre-existing sign, they can show that they have certain property rights to remain. Normally on our zoning regulations, when you change the zoning rules, because property rights, when they vest, it cannot be taken away without payment of compensation or due process, then it takes a little longer to modernize and bring properties to the current level of code. You have to meet certain criteria like, you know, imminent threat of danger to health and safety. So normally we can change the regulations and
Okay.
Existing properties can remain the way they are as grandfathered, you know, over, and over time, when they apply for a permit to, to make changes, that's when we normally require them to comply with their current codes.
Okay, I'm just curious, you know, this, you know, made me think of that sign because that sign to me looks like a billboard, even though it's not classified as a billboard. And, and I do see it still and I remember, you know, we took action on that. So if staff can give me an update at some point, you know, just shoot me an email, let me know about that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll do it. Yeah. One last quick comment about the item.
Sure, sure.
Just to anybody who's concerned about impacts of these signs, I would suggest drive past the one that was erected at the Hyundai dealership because there was a whole lot of hype and commotion about that one at the time. And now when you drive by there, you'd hardly even notice it and if you did, you'd say, that's it? Like that's, that's what all the fuss was all about and it's really, you can see for yourself that it's just not that big of a deal. I'm sure it's helpful to their business, but it's
I think the idea is for people to notice these things though, right?
I know, right, right.
Okay.
Well, and, and let me just add, the input that you've given us tonight is probably exactly what we, you know, we, we mainly wanted to make sure we weren't going off on our own, doing some stuff. We thought the visual would be helpful to you, just to have that for your own resources. When you get questions about it, we'll continue to have discussions and if we think that there's something worth bringing forward to you, we'll follow up at the rate, you know, as we have something to share with you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 10B. Mr. Beard?
Yeah, this, this item came up, this item came up as a, as a question related to residency of a commissioner, but in line with that, it forced me to open up the municipal code and read it. And, and my, I brought, the first item I'd like to discuss is related to the requirement for commissioners, I'm talking about all commissioners to be registered voters, which is not a requirement under municipal code. I'd like to propose that we make that requirement of all commissioners.
Well?
That would require amending the city municipal code.
That would require amending the city municipal code.
Well, I, I think, you know, those that aren't registered voters may not be citizens, but they're, you know, residents, they may have lived there for a long time. I, I don't see any problem in having them serve on a commission, you know, Parks and Rec or a Neighborhood Improvement Commission. You know, it's actually been quite a challenge to fill some of these commission vacancies, as you are aware, over the past years, serving on the council. So, you know, maybe, you know, for the commissions, not the planning commission, I can see, you know, if, if folks are willing to serve. I'm just thrilled that people are willing to serve, to be honest with you.
I think we have abundance of applicants, so that's not a problem of people wanting in. And most, most people are, I would assume, are registered to vote as commissioners, and if they're active citizens. And it's not a qualification, it's also, it helps determine residency as well. It helps us check to see. So if we had updated the municipal code for all commissions and you had to be a registered voter, it would be just as easy for the city clerk to validate or verify their voter, that they are registered voters through the county. So that's one means of identifying residency. But you're, you're talking about why, why should you even be required to be registered to vote? That's one requirement, but I just think, to be, to run for office, you have to be a registered voter.
Certainly, to be...
Why, why not make commissioners, hold them up to that standard as well?
Well, I think there are some commissions that aren't, that don't receive a lot of applicants. Some of them are the Neighborhood Improvement.
Oh, we got, you checked the files, we got plenty of applicants for all commissioners, is that correct? Madam City Clerk?
The one that we might not have as many is with the Admin Board of Appeals.
Oh, yes, that one.
Oh, Admin Board of Appeals.
Administrative Board of Appeals.
Which is three positions, correct?
I believe that's five.
Five.
Yeah. It's all five, except for planning. Yeah, so...
What does that one actually do? What type of items do they, and I think I know, but it's...
Admin Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
Is that you're asking? Do you know more? I mean, it's, it's called on an as-needed basis by the building official, where appeals come.
Yeah, if, if I have the right commission in mind, Board of Appeals is normally building code issues. And that one is actually statutory, and it does require that the commissioners have certain qualifications. For example, be architects or engineers. And that would be one of the commissions that perhaps you wouldn't consider residency. And when you look at the municipal code, it does stipulate that there will be commissions, at least currently, there is a stipulation that Main Street Commission members are not required to be residents. But it also says that there are other commissions where the city council finds that the commission is intended to represent and further the interests of a specialized industry, trade or profession, and that the representation and furtherance will ultimately serve the public interest. As provided title to California Code of Regulations. So there is language in the code to allow the city council to make an exception for a specific commissioner, commissioner. So if the city council decided to make a requirement that all commissioners be resident voters, meaning registered to vote, there is currently language in the code that would allow you to make specific exceptions.
Okay, I understand that. I want to hear the reasoning why we want to add this new requirement. Why do we want to exclude all those who are really not citizens, but are legal permanent residents that are, that have lived here all their life in Garden Grove? I mean, if anything, we want to encourage more people to get involved, right? And this could be their way of serving their city. They may not have the desire to run for city office. And, you know, if they do, then of course, certainly, they need to be a citizen, you know, and, and gain a lot of experiences, or not. You know, I, I think we're making civic participation harder. And these commissions, I just thank people for serving on them.
Well, I...
Please.
I consider voting as a civic obligation activity as well, so it's debatable. I just think you haven't convinced me that you shouldn't be registered to vote. You're talking about citizenship versus a registered voter. I think they should be a registered voter within the city. If they're going to serve on a commission, they should be a registered voter.
And in order to be a registered voter, you have to be a citizen.
Okay. If that's what the requirement is, we have to be on the planning commission. Are you saying we shouldn't have that requirement for the planning commission? But is that...
It is a requirement of the planning commission.
That is the requirement for the planning commission, and you'd like to expand this to the other commissions?
Correct.
For what reason?
Oh, give me a reason why you shouldn't, because you should be a citizen.
That's not a reason, Mr. Beard.
Well, I'm not here for a debate. I'm saying, I, my recommendation is to this council, which would be to require that commissioners be registered voters within the city. If that takes a motion to direct the city attorney to revise the municipal code, that's what I'd like to do.
It would, okay. There is a motion on the floor.
I'll second it for discussion.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Fan?
Yes, as it's written now, it does, unless I'm misreading it, it says basically, all the members must be a resident of the city who are eligible by reason of age, citizenship, and otherwise to register to vote, right?
Yes.
So it's basically right now saying that if they're not required to be a registered voter, but they're already eligible to vote.
Correct.
Right. So I just don't see, we're like splitting hairs, because that individual has to...
It's already in there.
Right. I mean, I see where you're coming from, Chris, is that you're saying that they just have to make that step to say that I'm a registered voter?
Right.
Because that individual already has to be eligible to vote in the first place.
So he has to be a citizen to be eligible to vote.
Correct, right. So I really don't, to your point, Mayor, I don't see why requiring them to actually register to vote would change the landscape at all, because this individual already is going to be eligible to vote. So they were just, I was just making them now be a registered voter.
So that's for all commissions? And Madam Clerk, I have a question. Each person before they're appointed, after they submit their application, do you check on their citizenship status?
No, I don't.
Do you check whether they're registered to vote?
I have not in the past, but I have started with the planning commission when that came to my attention.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I don't know if this was covered, but what does it take to be considered a resident? I mean, there's some sort of legal minimum amount of time you spend in the city to be considered a resident of the city.
Yeah, first, let me clarify that state law does not apply to, to the commissions. Your policies are what applies to the, to the commissioners. And so you have the discretion to identify the qualification of commissioners. If I look at state law, it's only to help me figure out whether, you know, some minimum requirements are met. But ultimately, that is not dispositive. Ultimately, it's your decision. The commissioners serve at your pleasure as well. They don't have a right to be on the commission in the city council. The mayor can move to remove a commissioner at any time, because they serve at the will of the, you know, city council. Having said that, you can, you know, state law, there's Attorney General opinions and cases that, that implement and interpret state law. State law require, has two legal requirements, not just residency, but also domicile. And it includes both, because residency, you can have multiple residencies. There are individuals, I mean, I know a lot of individuals who live in Palm Springs that in the summer, they disappear from Palm Springs and they have another home in San Clemente or somewhere where it's a lot cooler. You know, same if you live in a very cold climate, you'll have a summer home. And so you can have multiple residents, or at least two. Domiciles, state law says you can only have one domicile. So for city council, the law says that you need to have both residency and domicile in the city where you're serving as a public official. In our code, we only use the word residency, and for planning commission, it uses the word qualified elector, which means registered to vote. So this is why we need to go on the honor system, because the determination of domicile is many factors. And intent is one of the main factors, you know, in, in the law. So where you intend to actually set your domicile, where you intend to go back to, either to sleep, or after you are gone on a business trip, or if you were in the military and deployed, or, you know, if you're a traveling, traveler businessman, where you intend to ultimately come back to, that is your domicile. So in the law, it's a factual issue, you have to look at all the different factors. This is why, when the question is posed of the Attorney General, the Attorney General will say, we are giving you authority to bring a lawsuit for a court to determine where the domicile is. And ultimately, a court of law determines where a person's domicile is. Residency, you know, again, even more factors are, are included. So, you know, I think that ultimately, the city council needs to give us direction on what you would consider the minimum requirements for commissioners to serve on these commissions. If the issue is one of residency, we would just bring it back to city council and, and make the city council the judge as to whether that commissioner actually lives where they say they live, and ultimately decide whether the commissioner remains on the commission or not.
Okay, so we did have that question at the last meeting, right? Has there been investigation, or, I mean, I think that's what folks came asking for?
We have not, we have not done an investigation at that level. What we can tell you, and is now on the agenda, you know, you know, we, you can consider whether to agenda that issue. But with respect to Commissioner Mai, he has indicated here as well that he does have a home in San Clemente, but that he resides in Garden Grove. And he gave you a lot of reasons why. His business is here, his military base is here, and he was living with his aunt and uncle. More, you know, during the week, his family does live in San Clemente, like his, his wife and children. He was not registered to vote, but he has since registered to vote in Garden Grove.
Okay, so basically, my understanding of the qualifications for members under Section B, that the council can make exceptions there, when we vote on that particular commissioner, or when we vote to approve, we are making those assessments and also those exceptions when we approve those commissioners. So there, there really isn't any debate necessary, is, is what I'm understanding, is that correct? You know, legal counsel, is that what you're telling me?
Well, if, if we knew they were exceptions, but when it's a surprise and you assume, then that's maybe a different scenario.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree that you would have to make a determination for either the commission as a whole, whether you will make exceptions for commissioners applying for that commission, or whether you make an exception for a specific commissioner. And I think that if you're making an exception for a specific commissioner, it should be included in the deliberations in the appointment.
Okay, so the motion that I heard and that was seconded, it's already in here. It's, there's already a citizenship and otherwise registered to vote requirement under qualifications of all commissions or boards. Is that...
The motion is to make the same requirement, my understanding of the motion is that the same requirement that applies to planning commissioners be applied to the rest of the commissions.
Well, with one exception, I think Main Street Commission would not qualify for that, because it was a businessman.
It already applies to all commissions.
Right, which is already in, in the code.
It's already there.
Are you on that page? Because if you, if you read the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, with the exceptions, like the youth commission.
Two ninety-seven of three hundred.
Yeah, I understood your motion not to change that portion of the code.
Correct.
So the only, the only, what, my understanding of the motion is that we would revise section, just to be very clear.
Two point two one point zero one five?
First paragraph.
Yes, two one oh one five, to say the members of all commissions shall be and remain, and we'll use the same language as in the planning commission requirement, which is qualified electors of the city.
That's my motion.
One more point. As far as what you talked about Omar with the domicile, domicile issue, that's not addressed in the planning commissioner, correct?
No, but, but by making them qualified electors, you are requiring them to be registered voters in the city. And, and that's a qualification that we can easily check, because a clerk can call the registered voters and, and double-check that information. So we don't need, you know, we don't need a lot of explanation from the applicant, they're either registered or they're not registered.
Right. And going back to, just to make an example with Mr. Vu Mai, he has since registered to vote, correct?
Yes.
But the issue of domiciles is still unresolved.
Correct.
Right. So I would like to possibly close that loop, and at least for planning commission, make it both residency and domicile. Because when you have, you know, two or three residences, they can always claim to go to Garden Grove as a resident, but that doesn't mean that, you know, they don't, they domicile in Garden Grove. And I think for a planning commissioner, it's more important that you have a closer nexus to Garden Grove than other commissions, in my opinion.
I, I would totally agree with that. I would say the, the issue of living here is actually a lot more important. I mean, I, I actually like tightening the language to qualified elector, and to tighten that, just because it adds a mechanism that's easily verifiable, and it takes it one, it's one extra thing we can cross off the list on, kind of due diligence and really understanding background of who we're getting. But to me, our commissioners, particularly planning commissioners, should actually live here and be engaged and actively involved, actively involved in the community, not just kind of, sort of live here sometimes, or, you know, some minimal legal requirements, that kind of thing. They should actually live here and be involved. And the only reason I could see making exceptions to that is if we just didn't have interest, but we've got an overflowing amount of interest from very qualified people who actually live here, are qualified electors. I, I don't think we'll have any problem filling seats.
I don't think we are qualified seats on a planning commission.
I do have a copy of a Attorney General opinion that talks about domicile. And can I just read some portions of it, so you can see how difficult it is to determine even domicile? It says, "While the question of domicile is a mixed question of law and fact, many factors enter into the equation, including where an individual is registered to vote, and his or her address for mail, where tax returns are filed, where an automobile is registered, and where a homeowner's exemption or renter's credit is taken. However, the critical element is that of intent. Where declarations of intent are significant, they're not determinative. The acts must be examined as well." So ultimately, the reason why this has to go to a court of law is because there's testimony, there's witnesses, there's neighbors, there's family members that will testify where the individual actually goes to sleep every night, or where they come back to after a long trip. So for staff, it's going to be very difficult. For the city council, it won't be difficult, because you, ultimately, you decide, you know, a yea or nay to keep a commissioner, to appoint a commissioner, or to remove a commissioner. But I'm telling you, it's going to be difficult. Staff is not in the business of hiring investigators to follow commissioners and, or to go interview neighbors, or, we, we're just not geared to, to do that type of work, which is why we've always used the honor system.
Okay, okay. So would you please repeat your motion, Mr. Beard?
Well, move to amend, amend the code to, and, or give directions to the city attorney to amend the code, or come up with administrative, or language in, for the code that says that the commissioners should be registered to vote, qualified elector, electors?
Yes.
Qualified elector?
Electors.
Yes, qualified electors.
Whatever Omar said before.
It's on the next page under the planning. All commissioners shall be residents and qualified electors of the city and shall not be employees of the city. And that was what you seconded, Mr. Phan?
Yes, and I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please vote. For all commissions?
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Mayor Portman Jones?
Yes.
Sure. All right. Okay, so that still leaves the issue of Mr. Vu Mai on here. And thank you for the additional clarification, legal counsel, and Mr. Phan for bringing that up regarding domicile. And, you know, removal, it says here, under removal, it says if the mayor wishes to remove. So what if the mayor doesn't wish to remove? Then the mayor just keeps him on or something, I imagine? So it's up to the mayor, right? And I've heard a lot of folks say, hey, you know, this is not really domicile. I think that's what they're really saying. And I would like to bring that forward at the next meeting on the agenda, and then everyone can vote on it. This is per two point two-one point zero-one-four.
Is there a motion?
Does it require a motion? It sounds like it doesn't.
Yes, if you, I would recommend a motion so that it could become an action item.
To put something on the agenda as an action item.
Action shall be submitted as, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please vote.
Third.
Any discussion on that? You thirded it? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Portman Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Henn?
Yes.
Motion C four yes.
Okay, great. Let's move on. There's no item ten C. We're going to move that to the next agenda because Mr. Buie is not here. I do have a few items. I just want some updates. And as folks brought up, you know, a lot of issues earlier during oral communications, and I want to hear where we are in terms of hiring police and how many vacancies are there? Where are we in hiring? Are we making intentional efforts to hire, you know, police that, that are multilingual or at least bilingual to serve our community or to, you know? Yes, Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, actually, a couple things that I'd like to mention to the council and to the public in general related to public safety. First of all, on the firefighters' side of it, some good news, we've been, we've had some shortages in filling all of our firefighter positions. And a week from Saturday, on February sixth, we are going to bring onboard nine new firefighters to the city of Garden Grove. That's going to be a big help to our staffing needs in the, in the fire department. So we are excited about that. On the police side of the ledger, one of the things that, and just talking to the police chief just earlier this afternoon, we have a lateral police recruit class, at least five new officers, I believe, will be joining the force in about a month, on March first, thereabouts. We also have, I believe, they are, they have another lateral recruit process in the works. I don't have all of the, the processes in front of me. We have a recruit class with some additional officers with, I think, two or three officers going through our, not the lateral recruit plot, process, but they're just the regular recruit process. And, you know, what I can do, what I'd like to do is bring back at the next meeting, just an update on our, on our staffing levels for you. One of the things that we're, we're really, we're trying to put all due attention to with our HR department and the police department, my mandate to them is to give all due attention to fill all vacant funded positions that we have. And so we are working, both of those two departments are working as hard as they can in cases where I can expedite the hiring process for particular positions. I've given them to go ahead to do that. We do have some, there's just some normal situations where you have, you have some of our employees on workers' comp, and if there's decisions, we can make on those to help them get back to work. Or other officers who just won't be able to come back to work for one reason or another, we're going to make, be making some, you know, some expeditious decisions on those as well. So, you know, it's important, you know, our officers are, you know, working really hard. You know, we, we do have, you know, issues of crime that we're trying to deal with. Just this week, you know, we had some, you know, we've got some ongoing issues with some, you know, criminal elements in Garden Grove and Santa Ana that are going back and forth with each other on situations that none of us want to see. So we know our officers are really working very hard. We're trying to get them all the resources that we can, and so we're trying to get these positions filled as quickly as possible. But I'll bring, bring a report back to you, working with the chief and the HR department on where exactly our staffing levels are and the new officers that we are, we're going to be bringing on shortly.
Great, thank you. I also wanted, this doesn't require any action or it doesn't need to have any agendization, but I noticed that our police department, citizens don't have a mechanism to make police complaints online, and they have to go into the police department. If there is no objection from my colleagues, I'd like the city staff to begin working on that, the chief and our IT director, to make sure that citizens are able to make those complaints online. Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we will certainly, I will, you know, talk to the police department and our HR department about how we can make that happen. So we'll be happy to look into that and report back to you as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you. I know other cities are already doing that. Okay. And, let's see. Colleagues? Nothing? Okay. I know Mr. Dibs came here and spoke about student in government day. I'm not really familiar with that. I guess it happened quite a while ago, but I'm, I'm more than happy to entertain that idea, and he comes right on in. And even a youth commission, I know that, you know, our code does allow for a youth commission, you know, with the whole section on the minors and whatnot. I think that's a good idea. You know, I, if, you know, there's no objections from my colleagues, if staff can look into that, you know, see what we can do and how to engage our youth in our city more, and perhaps, you know, we can all, you know, appoint, you know, some folks to be on a youth commission. What would they do exactly? I'm not really sure. So maybe staff can, you know, look at other cities and see what they do. You know, maybe a cost analysis too, and how much it would cost in terms of staff time. I, I like the idea a lot. And definitely the student in government day, for sure. If there's any students that want to, I mean, I know that a lot come to the council meetings in the beginning, and they have to go home early because they have a lot of homework. But if there's a day where we can all be here and show them around City Hall, you know, I'm more than happy to do that. This doesn't really take up much of my time, really, you know, it's only, it's like having the, on young kids come, you know, and visit, so. Any?
Well, we have a history. I mean, there was some history, and he mentioned Kim Hoy has some background experience in it, so that's a starting point. What, when was it? What, what did it do? And maybe we could take baby steps towards having a government day. We could look at that, the costs associated with staff time and putting it together, either a commission or just a day. So I'm supportive of that.
Great, great. Yeah, I don't think there is really any council action needed unless we actually go and, you know, after we hear from staff on the commission aspect, you know, if we can bring that forward just for us to look at it, and then we can decide to take action if we choose to at that point. Okay? Any other comments, colleagues, city manager?
That's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Members of council?
I don't know if anyone is still tuned in, but I do want to remind folks that I have a open door meeting this Thursday, January twenty-eighth, at 5:00 PM at the Buena Clinton Family Resource Center. So if you're around there, you want to stop by and meet the mayor, by all means, come on by. All right? Thank you. Well done.